Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. And welcome to the March 4th, 2020 meeting of the Daytona Beach City Commission. We're delighted to have each of you with us this evening. At this time, we ask that Ms. LaMagna review the procedures for tonight's meeting.
Good evening. Agendas are available in the front of the room on the table to my right. All of the exhibits pertaining to items on the agenda are posted on the bulletin board. Please feel free to view the exhibits at any time during tonight's meeting. You are required to fill out a yellow form to speak before the city commission during the business meeting. The yellow forms are located next to Assistant City Clerk Ms. Allison Brown. You must complete the sections that ask for your name, address, agenda item number, signature, and date. The form must be completed and placed in the designated box. Items on the agenda for first reading usually do not allow for public participation. However, there are some instances where citizens are allowed to speak on first reading items when they are considered public hearings. Items on the agenda for second reading are open for public hearing, and citizens may speak at the designated time. Item number seven is your opportunity to address the city commission concerning any item on the consent agenda. Please indicate on the yellow speaker sheet the agenda item number of the item or items you are addressing. Items or discussions not listed on the consent agenda will not be heard during this comment section. All citizens completing a yellow form will be allowed to speak for two and a half minutes. When you approach a lectern, please speak clearly into the microphone and give your full name and address. The two and a half minute clock on the monitor above and directly in front of you will start running when you begin to speak. Pay close attention to your time. You will be told when your time has expired. Item number 13 is the public comment form, and it will convene after the adjournment of the business meeting. This is the opportunity for the public to speak on any issue that is not on the business meeting agenda. All citizens completing the green form will be allowed to speak for two and a half minutes. When you approach the lectern, please give your full name and address. Disorderly conduct in the public meeting of the city commission. Article 2, Section 6238 of the City Code of Ordnance reads as follows: "It shall be unlawful for any person to behave in a riotous or disorderly manner in any public meeting of the city commission, or any committee, agency, or board thereof, or to cause any unnecessary disturbances therein by force, shouting, or any other action that is calculated to disrupt such meeting, order refused to obey any ruling of the presiding officer, or such meeting relative to the orderly process thereof. Please be courteous and respectful of the views of others. Personal attacks on the city commission, city staff, or members of the public are not allowed. Please silence cell phones and other wireless devices during the meeting. All conversation must take place either at the lectern or on the dais so that everyone can hear the business being discussed tonight."
Ms. LaMagna, may we have a roll call?
Commissioner May.
Here.
Commissioner Gillan.
Here.
Commissioner Henry.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Traeger.
Here.
Commissioner Delgado.
Here.
Mayor Derrick L. Henry.
Here.
We'll now move on to item number four, which is approval of the minutes. The approval of the minutes of the January 29th, 2020 strategic planning kickoff, the January 22nd, 2020, and the February 5th, 2020 business meetings of the city commission.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0. This time, we will hear from our city manager to address any changes to our agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. We have one change in item 8J, dealing with the allocation of backweek sponsorship funds. Remove the donation for $250 to the Florida Lions Conklin Center Weather Blind.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Who's the second?
Commissioner Traeger.
Commissioner Traeger.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. This motion carries 7-0.
We'll now move on to item number six, which is our presentation. Item number six, A, is the Healthy Start Coalition of Flagler and Volusia Counties. Thank you. Excuse me, Mr. Strickland. She's trying to get by you. Thank you.
Welcome, Ms. Morgues. This is a part of the initiative that I had shared with you all about two months ago or more, and so I'm happy to have you and excited about your presentation.
Thank you very much. Good evening to the commissioners. Mayor Henry, I really appreciate you taking the time for this presentation, and I hope I can do it in 10 minutes. That's what I was told my timeframe was. So, first of all, I just want to say thank you. I have been part of the Mayor's Fitness Challenge. I have lost a little weight, and I have gotten a lot more fit. So, first of all, I just want to thank everyone from the city for all the efforts to help our residents be more healthy. I think I was supposed to say my name, Dixie Morgues, and with the Healthy Start Coalition of Flagler and Volusia Counties, and our address there is 109 Executive Circle, Daytona Beach, Florida. So, I think Commissioner Reed, Mayor Henry, Mr. Chisholm, Chief Capri, so many of the people from your city staff have been really wonderful to work with, and I wanted to start by saying thank you. I also want to thank several contributors, and I don't know if anybody that's here for this issue wants to raise their hands. You can see there's quite a few people here also supporting this initiative. Bethune-Cookman University's Masters in Public Health Program, we have an intern, Mackenzie Butzer, who's been wonderful to help us gather data and make this presentation. The Florida Department of Health, the Daytona Beach Housing Authority, and the Residents' Initiative Council, members of the Housing Authority, our Pritzker Fellow, Helena Gerard. Also, we've been working with the National League of Cities and the National Association of County Governments in presenting this initiative. The Center for the Study of Social Policy, City Match, and One Voice for Volusia. So, I just want to thank all of them for their contributions. So, I just want to say, you know, our leaders have been very successful in strengthening anchors in the community, enhancing our prosperity, and attracting visitors and businesses. I've been here since 1991, and I've seen such wonderful growth. The Mayor's Fitness Challenge, the Literacy Challenge, all the structures that I've seen come about, the Aquatic Center, the Midtown Cultural Center, the Avon Scarlett Golden Center, they really are treasures in our city. We have a rich history. The city has many landmarks and heroes, and they give us a lot to be proud of. So, what I wanted to come here today to talk about is what we know about public health and what it tells us about where we live. Research has proven that maternal, fetal, and infant health outcomes are indicators for the overall health of a community. That's our job at Healthy Start. The Midtown area of Daytona Beach is 32114 zip code, has an exceptional opportunity to improve outcomes through what we call place-based initiatives. Public health understands that in order to improve health outcomes, communities must work together to address what are called social determinants of health that are prominent within established areas. Best practice models have shown ways to improve outcomes, and in Rhode Island, they have an initiative called Health Equity Zones where they've shown significant progress in bringing some parity to the health outcomes to people who typically have indicators that say that they're not as healthy. This model presents a win-win relationship with the city and county government and other relevant stakeholders for its ability to bring parity to neighborhoods that have challenges and elevate value in those areas through environmental and economic focus as well as health access. So, what is health equity? Health equity is what really talks about bringing things into parity. And I think someone described it this way to me, and it really made sense, and that is that if a race starts at 7:00 in the morning, and you tell some of the people that it doesn't start until 8:00, you can't possibly expect the people who showed up at 8:00 to cross the finish line at the same time as the people who came there at 7:00. And our history indicates that there have been many things about our community that have resulted in an inequity. And our job in public health is to bring things to parity and to bring things to equity. So, it optimizes conditions of where people are born, grow, live, work, and learn, that all areas of the community play a part to address factors that influence health. So, it's all of us. It's the city government, it's our law enforcement, it's our public health, it's our schools, it's our residents, it's everyone. Health equity across sectors is the top goal of the Florida Department of Health in its state health improvement plan. So, we are aligning with our state's goals. So, what are social determinants of health? They are the social factors that determine an individual's overall health outcomes. They're derived from the environments in which people are born, live, learn, work, play, worship, and age. Place-based organizing frameworks reflecting the five key areas of social determinants of health are things like neighborhood and the built environment, health and healthcare, which, according to Robert Wood Johnson, is only about 40% of people's health outcome. Social and community context, education, and economic stability, things like housing, poverty, crime. So, the Midtown redevelopment area, in that area, we have a higher concentration of poor health indicators resulting in the zip code and the county outcomes lagging. So, when I look at low birth weight rate for the whole county, and then I look at Daytona Beach, and then I zoom it into Midtown, it's where the majority of the low birth weight cases are that we're looking at. So, if I'm doing my job, my job is to zoom in on where the outcomes aren't good and figure out how to mobilize us to help those outcomes improve. History of inequities contributing to generational health determinant issues are prevalent in the Midtown area. Structural challenges create an economic vacuum that can make positive change difficult, and I appreciate your comment, Mayor Henry, when you said, "People always come and tell us, you know, that the outcomes aren't good, but what are we going to do about it?" Having, it's not what, it's not what the data tells us, it's what we're willing to do about what the data tells us. Low-hanging fruit provides opportunities to address and improve several of the indicators we know about. We have an opportunity to build a strong partnership between city government and public health stakeholders and our private partners and our residents. Our work with the National Association of Counties and the National League of Cities has provided great learning opportunities that are resulting in this presentation and this proposal to resolve collectively, to concentrate on a designated area, and commit to better health outcomes in that area. Strengths in the area to connect to: the Keach Street Clinic, the Daytona Beach Housing Authority Network Neighborhood Zones, the cultural centers, our health department site, which, there was a CMS building there on Keach Street, and it is now almost ready for opening by the health department where there's services that can be put there. The Volusia County Schools, there's so many anchors in the area. I think everyone here knows what the redevelopment zone encompasses. Obviously, if we look at an area, there's several things we can do from a public health standpoint, but Bethune-Cookman University was able to get an institutional review board, which will allow us to input the addresses from the redevelopment zone, and actually, when we know there's a pregnancy or a baby born, we can actually wrap around that family. And there's another model like that called the Best Baby Zone, and so we're really excited to be able to do that in partnership with Bethune-Cookman University's Public Health Department, Masters in Public Health Department. The data and the research, in that area, it had the highest rate of low birth weight. Those are babies born too small. It had the second highest infant mortality rate in our county. It had a much higher rate of preterm births, and the women were less likely to initiate breastfeeding, and the WIC participation is low, even though most of the women in the area are eligible for WIC. Families by poverty status are disproportionately in higher poverty. The educational attainment rates are lower. Child homelessness and child removal rates are higher. There were 430 homeless children reported in Volusia County Schools from the 32114 zip code area. We don't have enough data to zoom into Midtown about that. And then, I was very interested to participate and attend the redevelopment board meeting and look at the comstat report because the domestic assault cases in that one small area, between the dates of 121519 to 1420, we're talking about a three-week period, there were 41 domestic assaults in that one small redevelopment area. And that should give us all cause to be concerned for our children and our families, and the police have been wonderful in coming to the Residents' Initiative Council, to presenting the information, to bringing it to the redevelopment board information. So, I just think if we work collectively, there's a lot we can do. So, opportunities for housing improvement. One of the things that we did see, we went around with students, and we took photos of some of the opportunities, the housing opportunities. You can see there are several houses that are inhabited where some structural support would be extremely helpful. You can see that, I'm sorry, did I go back? You can see the tarp on the roofs on these houses. Houses are very tidy. You can tell that it's a well-maintained home, but the tarp has been on the roof for quite a while, and when the code enforcement representative at the redevelopment meeting presented, there was one home where the same tarp has been on a roof for over two years, and the code enforcement folks are not finding her, but she's 85 years old, and she's had this tarp on her roof since Hurricane Irma. And I know that somehow collectively, we could find a way to knock on that door and help that mom, or help that elderly woman with her roof. It's just a matter of trying to find a way to mobilize together to help people in a specific And then, some of the areas where we see a lot of the statistics on crime, this one house right here, there is no tarp. It was just the roof was very torn up, and again, very tidy home, very clean environment around it, just really needs some structural support. The walkability, I know you all had a walkability evaluation that was done, but there's opportunities for environmental and structural improvements. So, over on the left, and it's funny because Patricia Boswell, who's our administrator of health, is here, and she looked at the dumpster, and she goes, "Oh, we can have that removed," right? And again, it's not, it's not that it's hard to do, it's that I think if we all work together, there's so many things that we can do. So, if you see a dumpster like that, it can have vermin, it can have bedbugs, I mean, there can be a lot of things in a situation like that that we could fix easily. Some of the walkability, we saw at least three people in wheelchairs that had no sidewalk to move their wheelchairs. So, you know, there's, there's opportunities for some structural improvement, and then obviously, things that could be moved. We always worry in public health about things like standing water and places where, you know, rodents can collect and things like that. So, there's wonderful opportunities in this area. Oops. I also want to say that connecting with the Daytona Beach Housing Authority, I think Natalie Wells is here, and Ms. Bates is here. The Whitney Street Network Neighborhood Zone and the Residents' Initiative Councils and the Network Neighborhood Zones that they're working on are havens in a community. Computers, after-school activities, girls on the run. I just cannot say enough about what's happening in the neighborhood to really provide some improvement. And I think, you know, some things like, I told Natalie, I want to get you a sign for outside that Whitney Street location, because it's, it's where the residents live and play. I also want to say that when one of our staff members, Victoria, who's here tonight, talked to people at the Residents' Initiative Council and said, "What is the most important thing that you think would bring about better health for you?" It's never really what we think it's going to be. What they said was fencing. And part of that is when there, there are things that go on in another person's yard, or you do see a concentration of law enforcement issues, sometimes the thing you want to do is keep your child safe from that. And so, we think it might be a community garden, or a mobile, you know, food mart or something like that, and really, that's an eye-opener to have residents telling us, "If I could get fencing around my home, that would be really important to me." And so, I think the most important part of this is to listen, to listen to people that live somewhere and be ready to respond to what it is they're telling us. So, that's Dr. Andrea Thorpe. She retired, and it made me so sad. She was the pediatrician right there on Keach Street. Some of you may remember Nellie Allen, who went religiously to the county council and said every two weeks, "My community needs a children's clinic." And sure is anything. Eventually, Pat Northey said, "What do we got to do to get this woman up?" Children's clinic, and there it is. The library, the Dickerson Library, that building that you see right behind Dr. Thorpe is the building that the health department has put a lot of effort in remodeling and preparing to be an anchor for that community. WIC will be in there, so some of the numbers that we're seeing can improve and increase. Things like access to family planning, access to immunizations, the WIC, so there's a lot of services that'll be coming in there. So, I want to reflect a little bit on the Rhode Island model of the Health Equity Zones, and in their Health Equity Zone efforts, they leveraged $2.5 million from the CDC. So, they created a residents-led, place-based approach to health equity, and that means they convened a lot of residents to say, "What would better health look like for you in this neighborhood, in this community?" They formed community-led collaboratives with the municipalities. So, with the city, worked together to, even if it's one block at a time or one small area at a time, allowed the residents to address their main concerns. They did a lot of development of workforce training. They improved significantly their outcomes, and they increased ongoing funding opportunities. Helena Gerard, who's our Pritzker Fellow, and I were able to go to Rhode Island and see a couple of their Health Equity Zones, and it's really inspiring to see. So, I'm almost done. For those of you that are going, I think you've exceeded your 10 minutes. So, it follows something called a collective impact model, and that's a pretty simple formula for getting things done in a better way, because the city has a lot of things that they're working on all the time, the health department has a lot of things they're working on all the time, the housing authority. So many of us are here, and we're working, 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 but we're not working collectively. So, what is the collective impact model? One is there's a common agenda. We all say, yes, we're all going to go in this direction, and we're going to work together. Having processes in the capacity to improve those social determinants of health in the designated health equity zone. Shared measurement. So, we start saying, "Let's look at the data very intentionally. If this is the low birth weight rate now, let's look at it in six months, let's look at it in 12 months." And so, whatever those data measures are that we identify, how do we work collectively to look at those measurements in an ongoing way? Mutually reinforcing activities, we support one another. Continuous communication, we have a way that we're constantly communicating what we're doing, so that we know what the housing authority is doing. The housing authority knows what the city is doing, the health department, right? So that we have a way that we keep robust communication. And then, backbone support. And Healthy Start is willing to be backbone support. We work with a collaborative called Thrive by Five, which focuses on issues from the prenatal to 5 age. And we don't have to be the backbone organization, but we are willing to be, because our goal is to make sure that these health outcomes for families and young children improve. If someone else stepped up and wanted to be in that role, or there were funding that put someone else in that role, it's not a proprietary thing. It's really something, we just want to make sure there's a backbone that keeps it going. So, some of the strategies, continue to engage the residents and the leaders, conduct ongoing assessments with city government, public health, and the people in the community. Kofi is community organizing on family issues. We have two resident initial, I'm sorry, resident initiative representatives who will be going to Portland, Oregon, I think, next month, May, in May, to become familiar with this model and become part of a national parent leadership network. So, we're excited, and I think we have a couple here tonight. Yes, thank you. Thank you for being here. Fully implement the community health nurse, so we got money from the Hunter Foundation, and we just hired the nurse, and that nurse will be able to be available for residents in the community, follow up on immunizations, follow up on babies born, follow up on family planning, all those good things. So, that's being implemented now. The Family Place Walk-In Access Site in the Daytona Beach Housing Authority Network Neighborhood Zones, I believe Linda Mandiza is here from the Department of Children and Families, and we're looking at an empower use model for the network neighborhood zones where people can come in and apply for Medicaid, food stamps, things like that. Work with the city, police, parks, code enforcement, redevelopment board, and the commission to address structural and environmental issues. Imagine if you had someone you could call and say, "Mrs. so-and-so still has that tarp on her roof. Can somebody just go knock on her door and see if we can connect her to somebody who can help her fix her roof?" Because someone who lives in a home that still has a tarp on their roof probably has mold and mildew and water collecting, and it's not healthy, and it's not healthy for the neighborhood. So, I know that collectively, you know, everyone in that redevelopment meeting wanted to help that woman. I think, is, I remember everyone going, "We should be able to help her," but no one really knew what the next step would be. The renovated health department building, they'll have the STI testing, the HIV services, WIC, immunizations, family planning, and all those services now will be right there on Keach Street. Dulce, and linking families to medical legal partnerships, and I believe we have somebody here from MidFlorida Legal Services? Yes, Alicia Magazoo. So, I learned another thing in this work with the Pritzker Initiative, and that is that many of our residents don't need another social worker, and they don't need a doctor. They need a lawyer. They need someone that can help them apply for and follow through with disability. They need somebody that can help them address a $40,000 child support enforcement bill that's been looming over their head. And so, having legal services as a strong part of a partnership has been my newfound treasure, and I want to thank the lawyers that have helped so many of the families now, since we really started making that partnership stronger. Housing case managers to help link to housing or housing repair. That was the one thing, when I talked to Jennifer Watley, who handles all the homeless students in the county of Volusia, I said, "What would help you?" She goes, "Gosh, if some of these schools had a housing case manager before the people get evicted, before something like that happens, where we could help prevent homelessness and support that family staying in their home." And then, access to healthier foods. So, in summary, using a collective impact model can bring about better results for the people that live in a designated area. Unified effort with city and county government and multiple sectors coordinating together toward a common agenda can work. Establishing a health equity zone through a resolution by the city is really what we seek. Determine new baselines of information and data. How do we say, "Look, let's have a dashboard. Let's see, how are the health indicators in this community doing?" Focus on measurably improving the health outcomes in Midtown. Improve those social determinants of health, and enhance efforts to achieve prosperity, access, and well-being for every resident in Daytona Beach and for the people in the Midtown area. I want to thank so many of the stakeholders. I'm here as a voice, but there's a lot of people sitting here that have done a lot of work toward this. Bethune-Cookman University, Career Source, Community Legal Services of MidFlorida, Community Partnership for Children have been very supportive, the county of Volusia, the housing authority, your police department, Chief Capri has been wonderful. Two of the, I think it's Captain Goss and Captain Lee, who so graciously give data and talk about what the officers are seeing in the area. David Holland and the Kerpet Trust gave us the money so that we could get that health nurse out there. The Department of Children and Families, the Early Learning Coalition, Halifax Keach Street Clinic, Halifax OBGYN Associates. It's Dr. Carbine, or she's here tonight. Thank you for being here. The Health Department, our coalition, the Homeless Coalition, the Hunter Foundation, VCAN 2020, MidFlorida Community Services, One Voice for Volusia, all of our parent consumers, the SIDS Alliance, Thrive by Five, United Ways Helped Me Grow, and our Volusia County Library there. So, I just want to give credit to all the people that have participated in this. And Commissioner Reed, thank you for showing up. That's half of it, isn't it? Just showing up and hearing people and what their concerns are. So, with that, I will ask if there are any questions. I did submit a sample resolution that I think Mr. Chisholm wanted to review with the city manager or the city attorney, and I think there had been some questions. I also got to thank Betty Goodman, who shows up to every one of these Mayor's Fitness Challenges and keeps us all extremely motivated, doesn't she? So, I don't want to leave here without thanking her. So, I would open it for questions and, and hope that you can see this in a favorable light.
As I said to you when you first mentioned it to me, I was very excited, and a favorable light doesn't begin to describe my sentiments about the effort. And I think that just the list of all of the people that you've thanked, and all of you who are committed to this cause of bringing about equity, which is something that I think so many of us really believe in the core of our beings, but you all are engaged on the front line on a daily basis, and from so many different areas. But I think your presentation really expresses how many people we have in our community who are committed, and we have talked about this almost ad nauseam on this commission. And when I say this, I just mean, how do we help? And so often, it is that we don't know what to do, and very often, we don't know how much is already being done. And I think you've illustrated how much is being done, but what this is really about, if I may, in a nutshell, say, the real objective is how do we bring all of these factors to bear and to say that these are the factors that we have that are going on, and the objective is to make a difference in this little enclave of our community? And then, how do we sort of promote what we're doing so that other people will see And then how do we sort of promote what we're doing so that other people will see what we're doing and see what needs to be done, and then we can leverage at the end of the day, because we know it takes money to make a difference in some ways, and we know we're already making a difference. But we bring all these things together, and we can promote this to people who want to help these enclaves where inequity exists. Am I expressing what our objective is? Because I'm 100% in.
Absolutely, and I think the resolution, imagine if we said, welcome, you're entering a health equity zone. And we got people asking, what is a health equity zone? How can I be a part of this? I think our hospitals would be willing to play a part. I think there's plenty of people, when they see something that's going somewhere and has some ends in mind as far as the data, I think we could get a lot of support, I think we could get a lot of national support. Just, you know, the National League of Cities is very interested that we're here right now, and we did have an interview with the National Association of County Governments. I think Commissioner Reed is willing to do an interview, maybe they, you know, you'd be willing to do an interview with them, because they are very excited that part of the Pritzker Fellowship has allowed us to go nationally, see best practices, look at research, and bring it back to our local community, and actually move it to a next level. So I think there's a great opportunity to get that kind of acknowledgement, which then I think reaps us some potential funding. Hunter Foundation, you know, funds that nurse, they're very anonymous, so here I am in a city commission meeting in front of everybody, but there are funding sources that are interested, and I think they're waiting to see what happens here, what, can we really mobilize? Because I just want to say, I came here in 1991, I worked in midtown, in Pine Haven before it was Hope Six. I saw children there with rickets, which is a vitamin C deficiency, which should never happen in Florida to any child. And that, to me, was such a reflection of somehow an area in our community that just wasn't getting health messaging, and wasn't getting families to where they needed to go. We're not there right now, but I still see health outcomes that I think, let's get some parity here, let's figure out really what the pathway is, and let's ask people who live there, what do you need? What can we do with all this energy, you know, to keep developing programs and bring some program and have people look at you and go, well, I never asked you for that, that's not helping me? I think it's really listening to people in the community too, because they'll tell us if we listen.
Could I?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I see a question, ma'am?
Yes.
I'm very much intrigued by the health equity zone, so my first question is, are you doing anything about mental health? My belief is that much of the issue begins with mental health, and especially family mental health, systemic health. So how are you addressing that? I'm not seeing a mental health component there.
No, in Healthy Start, we do, so part of wrapping around, especially, you know, a woman who's pregnant, is for every woman, we screen with something called the Edinburgh Depression Screen. So we do a mental health status on every pregnant woman, and every family where there's a newborn baby. I also know that the Community Health Needs Assessment that was conducted, mental health was one of the top priorities. But for the people who live in that neighborhood, it is not necessarily a priority, and that's a point, so.
Right.
Right, so your point is really well taken. What are we doing, and how do we bring that to the table and say, how will we address this with people in this neighborhood?
Okay, that was the first thing. And then the second question I had was, we actually have a, just a point, we have a paramedicine unit, is there any way that we could partner with that and involve that through Chief Driscoll? Which, actually, we have a little mobile medical unit that goes around, be interesting to work with your nurse.
Yeah.
And see how that kind of ties in together.
Yes.
Right? And so I guess I would like to know, from your experience, what is it that you would like from the city government? I just really would like to know, what is our role? Is it marketing? Is that what it is?
I think, first of all, is resolution, where we say, yes. We are partners in this.
Okay, that's all.
And that, and that we have a designated staff person that would attend convened meetings that we have, that when we need data, and I will say the Police Department has excellent data, but when we're trying to drill down and work on something, if it's on city property, then I would want, you know, the cooperation from the city. If the families want to convene and do something, can we utilize through parks, one of the facilities to do that? There are things the city has control over that can be very helpful to move efforts along. And I think it's really having the communication, the ongoing communication, and also making sure there's somebody from the city at the table when we're, when we're talking about these issues. It's, you know, it's interesting, because in the Thrive by Five collaborative, we always wanted to reach out more to the business sector and to the policymakers. I mean, it's happening at the city level, and I don't know that we've done such a good job of building those relationships between all these agencies that are doing these things and our city government. And I think if we make a commitment that we cross-pollinate and that we have someone from the city at these meetings, I think that that would be an important commitment that would be part of the resolution.
Mr. Mayor, we can have a resolution to you at the next meeting. I think it's important that you give us the designated person who's going to be interacting with our staff. We do have a number of programs that are going on currently with the city.
Yes.
In these areas, and addressing some of the very needs you're talking about, so it'd be nice if they were coordinated in some fashion to be.
A little more effective.
Yes, and I don't know if you're aware, but actually, our Health Department has a health equity representative, Ethan Johnson. So there are people from each agency that would be designated to be a part of everything that we're doing, so.
I think, I think there's a, an opportunity to get everybody together so we communicate.
Yeah.
Because what I see missing is there's no communications between what the city's doing and its staff and what other agencies are doing out there. So if this is a nucleus, or the center of all this activity, then it's a great, great opportunity to make that happen.
Yes.
And I think that's the key to success, is having a communication and having the interaction between the agencies.
Yes, and we want to align with the Community Health Needs Assessment and the Community Health Improvement Plan, because that's a greater plan for our county. But being able to have place-based initiatives, being able to even look at the Mayor's Fitness Challenge and challenge another city to do a Mayor's Fitness Challenge, you know, there's a lot of things that, that we can do to promote better health. But in midtown specifically, just having that institutional review board approval, and Bethune-Cookman's Masters in Public Health Department's approval, has really helped us zoom in and look at that area, so they're a major partner here too.
Mr. Mayor, I don't think we have to do a resolution to get, begin the process of interacting with you, and we would certainly encourage that to happen. So Chief Driscoll's in the back, he's our Fire Department Chief and Deputy Manager. He's available to meet with you and schedule an opportunity for us to kind of get these actions and interactions going. We're going to do the resolution, but I think we can do this without the resolution, that part of it.
Thank you.
Could somebody put her in touch with Don Gooding? He might have a program.
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments, Commissioner?
Well, you know, it was just a beautiful thing to see all of those agencies come together and everyone be so concerned, and genuinely concerned. I was, I was quite pleased, and I'm thrilled, because this area has suffered for so long. So it's nice, it's beyond nice to see that, that collaboration come together and to know that you're very sincere about your efforts. And I was pleased and proud to sit at that table with you all and have that discussion. So I say, let's get to work, let's go to work.
Can I ask one more programming question? I'm kind of a nuts and bolts kind of person, as you can tell.
I love it. Thank you for showing up to the HUD event, by the way.
Yeah, pleasure, pleasure.
Because that was, it was good to see you there.
Do you have, which organization offers parenting classes? I was just having a conversation today about something as simple as basic parenting classes. Who offers that?
So if it's an infant's parenting, we offer, we'll do it one-on-one in the home. We have something called We Time Parenting, which is for parents who've touched the dependency system. The house next door has parenting services, but it's something I would love to grow more of. One of the things that Victoria, who's here, she facilitates our We Time Parenting, we'd love to duplicate that. And if we can duplicate it in neighborhoods where parents start teaching one another, we do something called Strengthening Families. It's, it was developed by the Center for the Study of Social Policy, it encompasses five protective factors that all families need, and it engages families in conversations about their child's development, it engages in conversations about where to get concrete supports and how to build social connections. And so that is one of the things that our parents will go and learn in Portland, Oregon, and hopefully bring back and spread, so.
And then finally, what about the teen population? I know we're dealing with parents and children, and there's always that little population between the age of 18 and 26. Which programs address those?
Well, I wish there were more. The Child's Academy, which is right on George Ingram Boulevard, does take teen moms and their children. I would like to see us do more, frankly, in the schools and in our neighborhoods, just to talk about child development, pregnancy, and family planning. That's not easy in the schools, there are certain things that are sort of off limits. But I will say that at the network neighborhood zone on Whitney, I know they have Girls on the Run. I mean, trying to get young people involved in things that help them structure their time well is good, but these are all things that I think in saying, where is it? Is it a gap? If we don't have something, can we develop something? And I think that's what this whole effort is. There's a lot of things missing. Identifying what they are and then saying, how do we work together to fill that gap, is really where, you know, I'm hoping this goes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Dixie, magnificent as a presentation to all of you again, thank you. We recognize that we have much work to do. And a resolution, for me, it's symbolic, it will consist of words, but we all know that what's really needed is, is action.
Yes.
And there's a lot of action taking place. And so behind our resolution as a city, but I think as a, I think more importantly than just us, but I do realize the importance of the resolution. But I think that we have to show the community the resolve that's already taking place, because I think we can have a momentum of change to take over this particular area, which really means a lot to us. So again, thanks for all that you're doing, and thanks to all of you, and let's get to work.
Thank you, and you can all come to the grand opening of the Health Department Building, which is April.
April 2nd.
2nd.
Eleven AM. Eleven AM.
Ten, eleven?
Yeah, we have a flyer.
Eleven AM, good.
Eleven.
Wonderful, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dixie.
All right.
Okay. Moving on to item number seven, which is our public comments for people addressing the city commission during this time, citizens have the opportunity to address the city commission on any item on the consent agenda. And I don't have any speakers. I have one speaker, Ann Ruby.
Mayor, if I could, before we start, there is one change I need to point out to the agenda package which you received on Friday. With regard to item 8I, it's the Halifax Harbor Plaza lease, proposed lease agreement, there were two changes that were negotiated after the agenda was published. First has to do with section or paragraph 3.2. The lease was originally drafted as a five-year initial term with three five-year renewals, with the tenant having the option to elect the renewal. We've revised that now so that the third renewal will be a mutual option to renew, so the city can opt out on the third renewal if it so chooses. The second change has to do with providing for supplemental rents. If for whatever reason the tenant is unable to pay or unable to make the breakpoint for percentage rents as provided in the lease, this would provide for a supplemental rent to the city in the amount of half of the base rent. So it's essentially a boost in the rents if they're not successful from a percentage rent standpoint. So again, that's advantageous to the city if they're not making their percentage rent number. Those are the only changes.
Okay, very well. Any additional comments or, all right, our speaker, Ms. Ruby?
Ann Ruby, 137 Park Avenue, on 8H. It's kind of a cryptic thing to me, it says to renegotiate the cup or increase, extend the term of the permit, and it's, and if you look, and the only backup there is, is the memo, and it says it's due to related, related to anticipated growth. And I know Mayor Henry, you had been concerned about the amount of growth that we have. And so I remember when I took Citizens Academy, and we went to the Water Place, they said, we have more than enough water for the growth that we have. So I'm hoping that one of you can ask and get more details on what our cup limit is now, what are we increasing it to, what's, why do we need to have an extension? I'd just like more information on that.
Mr. Mayor, be happy to answer. Currently, the cup is 14 million gallons a day, I believe, and our actual takeout of that is like somewhere 12.1 million gallons a day. And the cup expires in about a year or so, so we're in the process of renewing that, that cup agreement with the state. Has nothing to do with the actual capacity of the system, it has to do with the authorized takeout by the Water Management District, by the city.
So, so are you seeking to increase it from 14 million a day to something else?
Yes, yes.
To?
To make sure we stay within the requirements that provide for by the St. John's Water Management District.
But what would that number be that we're seeking to increase it to? Or that's a negotiated number?
That's negotiated, and part of this, is part of what they're going to be doing with this.
Okay, what's the city's desired number?
To have sufficient capacity to always serve the community.
Okay, so.
We have capacity, I don't want to, it's, it sounds a little, capacity like we don't have capacity. We do have actual physical plant capacity and, and aquifer capacity. What we're asking for is a permit that allows us to take that capacity out of the ground.
Okay, thank you.
My next speaker is Doyle Lewis. Mr. Lewis?
What item, what item is Doyle talking about?
Um.
He's talking about anything on consent agenda. What are you talking about?
8A.
All right, 8A.
Robert, good evening. My name is Doyle Lewis. Daytona Beach. The entire reason why I speak here is because of you. The only thing I read when I come here is the piece of paper that you said here. Most of the time, I don't get to see the major details of these projects. And that's because of you. One of the reasons why you okayed this project is because of the money. Tell me I'm wrong. My name is Doyle Lewis. Tell me I'm wrong. My middle name is Wayne. Tell me I'm wrong, you didn't okay this project. I've been put out of business by people just like you. Click your pen on you want. I'll still say the same thing next week and the week after. The reason why this building was built, because you approved them to start the process, and you worked with the county, now you're working it. Tell me I'm wrong. Please, Mr. Robert Gillen, tell me I'm wrong. City Manager Chisholm, tell me I'm wrong. I want it in writing that I'm wrong. Because there's one thing I came here for, is to babysit you. I didn't raise my voice.
You didn't, but your time is up.
Thank you.
That was my final speaker, Mr. Mayor.
No, I. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
Okay. Moving on to item number nine, which is our public hearings. Item 9A is the Development Administrative Services Planning Division Consolidated Tamoco Parcel F Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment. This is an ordinance on second reading, public hearing. An ordinance adopting comprehensive plan amendments in accordance with Chapter 163, Part 2 Florida statutes, adopting amendments to the future land use map, changing the future land use designation of 120 plus or minus acres of property located on the south side of Granada Boulevard, east of Rema Ridge Road, and approximately two miles west of Interstate 9. located on the south side of Granada Boulevard, east of Rema Ridge Road, and approximately two miles west of Interstate ninety-five, from low intensity urban to mixed use, and amending neighborhood policy V to allow additional dwelling units and reduce non-residential entitlements on the property. Repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date and at the request of the applicant to have this item continued until the May sixth City Commission meeting.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Moving on to item number nine B, it's the Development Administrative Services Planning Division Consolidated Tamoca Parcel F Rezoning to Plan Development General, PDG. This is an ordinance on second reading, quasi judicial hearing. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezone nine hundred and ninety plus or minus acres of property generally located on the south side of Granada Boulevard, east of Rema Ridge Road, and approximately two miles west of Interstate ninety-five from Volusia County A two, RC Resource Corridor, and City PDG Plan Development General to City PD Plan Development General District. Approving the Consolidated Tamoca Parcel F Plan District Agreement with Consolidated Tamoca Land Company, authorizing the property to be developed as mixed-use project with approximately twenty-four hundred residential units and three hundred and thirty-nine thousand five hundred square feet of commercial area. Authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the Plan District Agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date. On behalf of the applicant, this is, item has been asked to be continued to the May sixth City Commission meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes not opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Moving on to item nine C, it's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division Triple-A Fence Small-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment. This is an ordinance on second reading, public hearing. An ordinance adopting a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment in cor- in accordance with Chapter one sixty-three point three one eight seven Florida statutes, amending the future land use map designation of three point five plus or minus acres of property located at the southeast corner of Orange Avenue and Lockhart Street from commercial, transitional, and retail to industrial, local service, amending the future land use element, neighborhood I, to limit certain authorized uses of properties referenced above, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and due to a news journal advertising era, this item is to be continued to the March eighteenth, twenty twenty City Commission meeting.
Let me see. All right, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes not opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Item number nine D is the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division Rezoning Triple-A Fence Plan Development Redevelopment. This is an ordinance on second reading, quasi judicial hearing. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezone three point five plus or minus acres of property located at eight oh one Orange Avenue from RDM five, redevelopment midtown neighborhood transition mixed use, and SFR five, single-family residential five, to PDRD Plan Development Redevelopment District. Approving the Triple-A Fence Plan District Agreement to clarify allowable uses on the property and provide for additional buffers adjacent to residential areas. Authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and due to a news journal era, this item needs to be continued to the March eighteenth, twenty twenty.
So move.
Take a motion from Commissioner Traeger, second from Commissioner Reed. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. This motion carries seven zero.
And our final public hearing item, the Police Department Amendment to the Municipal Ordinance, Chapter one ten, Wrecker Services, an ordinance on second reading, public hearing. An ordinance amending Chapter one ten, City Code, to amend Article one, Section one ten six, entitled Equipment Required to Regulate Equipment for Wrecker Services in accordance with state law, amending Section one ten thirty-eight, entitled Rates to Propose a Rate Change in Effort to Be Consistent with Current Market Rates, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and due to the news journal advertising era, this needs to be continued to the March eighteenth, twenty twenty meeting.
So move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. And, um, this, uh, all those in favor, excuse me, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. This motion carries seven zero.
Okay. Well, now move on to item number ten, which is our administrative items. Item number ten A is the Development Administrative Services Planning Division Land Development Code Text Amendment, amending Articles four, five, and six. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending the Land Development Code, amending Article four, Section four point seven point C point five, revising modified use standards applicable to development projects within the redevelopment beachside hotel mixed use, RDB one zoning district, amending Article five, Section five point two point B point nineteen point D, revising standards for gas stations as principal use, amending Article five, Section five point three point C point four, revising standards for non-residential canopies as accessory structures, amending Article six, Chapter six point three point H point four, revising minimum width for pedestrian walkways, amending Article six, Section six point nine point F, revising maximum height of outdoor lighting, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. No questions or comments. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
The public hearing is set for March eighteenth. Moving on to item ten B, it's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division Tamoca Independent Living PD Rezoning, First Amendment to the Plan Development General. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance approving the First Amendment to the Tamoca Independent Living Plan District Agreement located west of Tamoca Farms Road and north of First Baptist Parkway to reduce the minimum required caliber inches for shade trees and small trees within the required scenic thoroughfare overlay landscape yard along Tamoca Farms Road. Authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the First Amendment, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
So move.
Now, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
The public hearing is set for March eighteenth. Moving on to item ten C, it's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division Six thirteen Halifax Seabreeze Marina Condominium, Condominium, Rezoning Plan Development General, an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezone one point zero plus or minus acres of property located at six thirteen North Halifax Avenue from BR one, Business Retail one, and RP Residential Professional to PDG Plan Development General District. Approving the six thirteen North Halifax Seabreeze Marina Condominium Plan District Agreement, authorizing development of the property rezoned as thirty-six unit multifamily dwellings with associated site improvements. Authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. No questions or comments. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
The public hearing is set for March eighteenth. Moving on to item ten D, it's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division Daytona Beach Convention Hotel and Condominium Rezoning, Third Amendment to the Plan District Agreement. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance approving the Third Amendment to the Daytona Beach Convention Hotel and Condominium's Planned Commercial District Agreement, authorizing all hotel units previously approved for the North Tower of the Plan District Agreement to be developed as residential condominium units. Authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the Third Amendment, reserving City Commission authority to grant further extensions to project completion deadlines, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
We have a motion and a second. I mean, I know we have a motion, I didn't hear a second.
I didn't hear a second.
Motion from Commissioner Gilliland.
I'll second.
Take a second from Commissioner Henry. All right, any comments or questions? Hear none. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. This motion carries seven zero.
The public hearing is set for March eighteenth. And moving on to item ten E is the City Manager's Office Volusia County Tourist Development Council Appointment. This is a resolution. A resolution appointing a commissioner as the representative for the city to the Volusia County Tourist Development Council and providing an effective date. And Mayor, this is a mayoral appointment.
Uh...
The previous appointee...
Commissioner Ruth Traeger was appointed replacing Kelly White in her membership, correct?
Yes.
Are you, uh, willing to continue your service?
I will.
We appreciate you. And, uh... All right, we all, uh, have a motion and a second. Uh, no questions or comments. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
That was our final item.
All right, we'll move on to comments and inquiries from the City Commission, commencing with Commissioner May.
All right, so I'm, I'll be brief and I'll be fast. How's that? So last week, we had an issue with tractor trailers or semi-trailers being parked in residential neighborhoods. And I think we're working on it right now as per the city attorney, correct, sir? And I bring it up because I get daily photos from a resident who sees it, so...
Craig Capri Police Chief, I've checked it several times and I haven't seen a truck there.
Okay.
So I don't know when you got your last photo, but I've been checking it last week or so.
I got it this morning at about, I got it this morning.
I don't know, it's, it's a, trucks can only park there for two hours.
Okay.
We met with the one gentleman that had his truck there, and he assured it wouldn't be there. But we've been checking it every day. I've checked and I have not seen trucks there.
Okay.
So, but I'll, I'll make sure. We're, we're on top of it. But it's a two-hour time period to park the cars. We have the capabilities to tow in those trucks. And I'm sure if we get one and tow one, I think it'll definitely stop.
Yeah, I think so too.
Cause that tow bill's gonna be about a thousand bucks.
Okay.
So, uh, but we're all over it. We'll make sure, I'll make sure we check it and keep checking it.
Then what I'll do is when I get the pictures, I'll just forward them.
Just send them to me, and then we'll take care of it.
All right.
Thank you.
Um, also, the, uh, the break is Park Bathroom. I believe we're working on that, sir?
It's, I think it's complete.
Fant- really?
Yeah, it's been...
That's fantastic.
I had pictures of it being painted today and it, uh, it's a very nice, looks very nice.
Thank you so much, cause that was brought to our attention last month at the Beachside Neighborhood Watch Meeting, and the next day you were on it. That's great. Um, also, I got some news back from my merchants on Beachside that the commercial canvassing and solicitation that had been going on have been decreasing. And so they were quite happy with that. Um, and the trash seemed to be doing all right this past weekend. All right, so the two things that I, I'm going to say I would like to share with Commissioner Reed, um, the following. I'm going to request that we take a look at our redevelopment areas and we share some of them. And I have quite a few in Zone Three. I'd like to know which businesses are closed but seem to have signs up that say they intend to open but never seem to open. They may have now hiring signs up. They may have advertising signs up, but they're never actually opening. In one particular case, that's been going on for about two and a half years with a coming soon sign, especially on Beach Street, but then also on Beach Side. And so I would like to know if we could do, um, a survey of why they're closed and why they're closed and what they need to open. If we could interview them or find out, is it a leasing issue? Is it a tenant issue? Is it a permitting issue? Is it rental money that you're not going to open? But tell us something, because we're just seeing coming soon, but it's never coming. And if we can in some way, this is where we come in, if, if we can in some way help the situation, I would like us to take a look at that. I'm not sure what that looks like, but I just first want the information. That's number one. And the second thing is, once we have the information, I would like for us to have a primer on how CRAs work in each community. Cause I think we speak about CRAs, we speak about money and funding in CRAs, but all of us may not be versed in how that money is allocated, um, how it cannot be spent on certain things, and most importantly, how much is available and when it's dispersed. And so I would very much like to know if we could have a primer on that, um, either as a short presentation or, or whatever it is. Those are my two questions. Commissioner Reed, how do you feel? Okay. Super. And that is it for me this evening.
All right.
What do you think?
Mayor, I'd like to add to that. Uh, we are taking a comprehensive look at all of our regulations citywide with regard to parking of commercial vehicles in residential areas. And I'm, I'm planning on sending a summary to the commission just so everyone's aware of what the regulations are, and I may have some recommendations as, as well as to how we might clean that up and ba- make it more consistent throughout.
Mr. Mayor, that, that, he's not just talking about residential as it relates to neighborhoods. He's talking about all parking during events, uh, in addition to just, um, parking in the residential. Cause we have a lot of, um, violations of the code in some cases. And, um, and we need to review the code as it relates to those items so that we, uh, are doing what the intent is of the commission at this time. There's been, uh, there's a long history of parking and parking violations and what's authorized, uh, in various areas. And we, we need to talk about it again, cause, uh, times have changed from what it was initially. And, um, some of it may be, uh, certainly appropriate and some of it may not. But that's something we need to talk about.
Any other comments? All right, thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Gilliland?
Uh, let's see, last Friday, we, uh, out at the Sheriff's Emergency Operations Center, we kicked off the F dot Vision Zero, uh, campaign. And within, what, a day or two, had a, a pedestrian fatality at the corner of ISB and, uh, Beach Street. So, you know, clearly, uh, an initiative that's, that's needed. Uh, Port Orange, the Sheriff's Department, Daytona Beach are all participating. Uh, if you, if you notice along ISB, Mason, and US one, you'll see the, the kind of yard signs that talk about making sure that you, uh, you know, pay attention to people that are in crosswalks and, uh, you know, ob- you know, obey the traffic laws that are out there. Uh, you know, we, we were about the highest in the state last year. Actually, I think we were the highest in the state for pedestrian fatalities. They base it off population instead of, they don't factor in the fact that we have ten million visitors that roll through every year. But, um, but we, uh, you know, the, the department's position is, you know, any is too many. So their vision is to have zero fatalities or, uh, or serious injuries. Um, let's see. The, uh, Housing Authority was once again mentioned tonight very prominently in our, um, in our presentation. Um, it, I think, you know, Terrell Bates is doing an amazing job over there because under the prior leadership, we never heard of them. You know, uh, back when, um, Pete Gamble was running it. You know, they, all the time, there was an initiative, initiative, initiative. Um, i- it's great to see them get back to where they were back in the day and, uh, all the great things they're doing for, for our community. Uh, thank you, Public Works. Uh, the speed dumps are in over in Georgetown. The residents were very happy over there. Uh, let's see, there, and Andy, correct me if I got this wrong, but, you know, there, when you call for a special pickup of yard trash from Waste Pro, uh, and I've done it, I've only done it once, but, you know, they, they didn't charge me anything. Well, a, a neighbor, uh, last Friday was told that they were gonna charge him four hundred and fifty dollars to pick up, you know, some trees that he had, he had cut. It was a sizable pile of, of yard trash. But it was four hundred and fifty bucks. And what Waste Pro told him was that they were, they were supposed to be, they're supposed to charge every time they do a special pickup. And it's in the contract that way. Right, Andy? That, am I doing this, am I... Going back and forth between our emails, it was a little lost. But, you know, th- this is obviously a change in behavior on the part of Waste Pro because, um, you know, we're, there, there's a, an expectation that the residents have, uh, when they call for a special pickup. And now it appears as though that, that is changing. Andy, you wanna kind of fill in the gaps there?
In the, uh, thank you. In the case of the, the pickup that you're talking about, it was the size of the materials in the pile exceeded the six-inch diameter, the tree trunks that were actually in that pile that caused the pickup. And I talked to Waste Pro after you emailed me and made me aware of that. And they agreed to reevaluate the fee that they charged. But we, we informed the resident, we didn't, we didn't charge them a fee for that, so... Uh, but we, we didn't have to pay Waste Pro the four hundred and fifty either because it wasn't as much stuff, once it got in the trailer, in the truck, as it, as they anticipated, so... So it got resolved in an intelligent manner.
And that one, that one did get resolved, but it appears that Waste Pro is trying to deviate from their past behavior when it comes to special pickups. And I think we just all need to be aware that we may see some resident complaints of, of working with me on trying to do what we can to minimize the, uh, the effect of this particular situation. But there were some other folks that same day on Friday, you know, were expecting special pickups. They were also told that they were gonna be charged. So I haven't, you know, people weren't really willing to come forward on that one, so it was a little kind of unusual. But, uh, I did talk with two of them and they, you know, uh, once, then, once again, their expectation was that I called before and there wasn't a charge. So there needs to be some kind of communication. If they're gonna start charging for things that are over six inches in diameter, we need to make sure everybody knows that because we're gonna get complaints from folks if they picked that up before and now they're, you know...
What, what we've been doing when a resident questions those charges is we've been, um, basically giving them a free pass on the first round and then giving them an information sheet that, that describes exactly what the contract says with regard to extra charges for waste pickup, so...
Okay.
And that seems to have been working pretty well, so...
We've had this happen before, well, in some cases. And, uh, it's usually when it gets to be not just a pile of trash coming out of your yard, it's when they're cutting down multiple trees or trees. That's usually what generates the, the charge. Cause it, then they gotta come and bring special equipment to get that stuff loaded and, and hauled off. Yeah.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
And, uh, lastly, uh, Monday is an ISB Coalition, uh, uh, meeting. And, uh, lastly, uh, Monday is an ISB Coalition, uh, uh, meeting where they're planning on having a presentation from FDOT about East ISB. On the 31st, we have the, uh, the meeting at, at Midtown.
Midtown.
Um, for East ISB. And, uh, it just, Jim, there, you haven't heard anything about anybody thinking about a different model for, you know, I mean, we're still looking at the roundabout, the wider sidewalks, the raised medias, the landscaping, uh, you know, we're gonna underground the utilities, correct?
Right.
As they're, when the construction
Right.
around. Um, okay. It seems like there was, after my TPO exec meeting this morning, it seemed like there might be a little confusion in the community about where the project stands. So, um, you know, just wanna make sure that, you know, they're at, they're at 60% for the design
Mm-hmm.
um, right now, so any serious deviation from that would actually create a significant delay.
Delay, right.
I just, I have not heard anything about it deviating from the, the plan that we approved and I just wanna make sure that, that you, you know, no one else has.
There's no deviation from the plan that actually the board approved and sent to DOT.
Okay.
Now, they may have changed something, but it hasn't, we haven't, uh, done anything on our side.
Well, you know, let's not forget that the TPO also submitted a resolution of support and the city, uh, gave FDOT $750,000, uh, as a contribution towards the, uh, towards the design work.
That's right.
So, you know, it's a, it's a very important project to all of us. We all wish it would happen a little, a little sooner, but, uh, just to get a 23, $24 million project into the five-year work program was, uh, was a miracle. So the fact that we're, we're able to move forward with something that should help improve that corridor and hopefully inspire folks to invest in that corridor, you know, is something that we should all be proud of.
Absolutely.
And that's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Henry?
I only have three things tonight. And I, that is, I need to know what the codes are for roosters and hens in residential neighborhoods.
They're, they're not allowed. I can tell you that.
We, we just looked into that. I, I can forward in a memo on that.
You really just looked into it?
Yes, we did.
Okay, 'cause I got some complaints. You got some complaints too? Okay. So roosters and hens in, in residential neighborhoods and cackling all night.
Yeah.
Dogs barking. Do we have to wait until, uh, the dogs are actually barking before police officers come out? Because I, I keep getting complaints about aggressive barking dogs all night long and then I guess when the police get there, the dogs have stopped, but it's constant every night. Um, so I can, I can assume that that can be very annoying. Um, so I've gotten quite a few calls about that. And also, uh, I would like to know what is the code for loud music? Is there a time, um, that, that music has to be turned off or down? Those are things that I'd like to know.
There's a, there's a meter reading. We have a meter that the, uh, department has. And if it exceeds the allowed, uh, decibels, they, they're, and they're in violation, they'll get cited at that, right, at that moment.
Um, what about if the music isn't loud music, but it's very, uh-
Vibrates.
Vibrant, but very vibrant music.
Yeah.
With a lot of words that you nor I or small children or
Yeah.
family members, people in communities would want to hear.
Yeah.
Is there anything for that type of music?
We do have a more-
Chief, are you here?
Yeah.
He steps out.
We do have a more general regulation for obtrusive noise, which is more difficult to apply, but we can look at those facts, you know, with the, the department and see if we can enforce that.
Yeah, if you give us the address, we'll, we'll, uh, try to keep an eye on it.
I think it's a couple addresses and I, I think
Okay.
it's just sporadic complaints, but I just wanna know what the, what our box laws and, and rules and code is when they call so that I can explain it to them.
Chief, you want, uh, if a-
I'll take care of the trucks. We're on it.
Oh, thank you.
If you, if you got dogs
Thank you.
barking periodically.
Okay.
What's the solution for that?
We, we would do a, uh, affidavit, complaint affidavit and forward it through, go through the county court, go through the process. Uh, haven't really had much success with that. Best ways maybe get with the owner and try to explain it to them and, uh, do the best we can. It's just barking dogs?
Yeah.
Yeah, all night long.
Well, we'll send Animal Control to do an inspection, make sure the dogs are properly cared for. If they're leaving them outside, maybe they're yelping or barking because they're not being taken care of. But you just, if you forward it to me, I'll take care of it. We'll go out there, we'll make contact with them. But we can do an affidavit on them.
Yeah.
I, I did. That, that's the same one. That's one of the same ones that I did, um, forward to you about a month ago. And they're still, they're still complaining about the yapping dogs. So you're basically saying there's really nothing that we can do about dogs barking all night long?
We could do an affidavit. We can, we can talk to the owner. We can maybe get a fine out of them. Uh, is this the one with the pit bull? The one, yeah. I know, I, I think it's just, I can get you an email tomorrow where we're at with that. I know we've met with the owner. It's a young kid. He lives there with his, who owns the dog, I think, with his mom or grandma. Uh, I don't know what the latest on that. I know Co- uh, Animal Control's been working it, but I can get you an update tomorrow on that one. Is that the only one or just that, that same location?
It was another one. And I was thinking he got that off the chain as well.
Yes, let me, so I'll have Animal Control go out there and follow up on it. I'll get you a response tomorrow night, by tomorrow afternoon.
Okay. And I spoke and kind of asking, um, about the roosters and hens.
Well, they shouldn't have them in the city. I think there, there's a city ordinance on having-
There's an ordinance.
They're prohibited.
They're prohibited.
Well, if you give me the address, we'll go there and just confiscate those two. That's easy.
That's some chickens.
Hey, I'm, I'm happy with any animal control problems. I'm good with that all day long. It's better than violent crime, so, yeah, we'll, we'll, uh, we'll address it. Uh, we got really two sharp animal control officers that are, they're, they're unbelievable, non-stop. And we could, just if you give me the addresses, we'll have a resolution immediately.
And I know Cole was there. Cole was on that street today.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I haven't had a chance to speak with Denzel about whether or not they saw him because they're walking around really in the front yard.
What, what, what street is that? Lewis or?
Third.
Third.
Right, right, right on Third Street.
Is your mic on? Is your, is your mic on? I'm sorry.
Okay.
No, it isn't. Third Street, right on Third Street.
Are they just like feral or something?
Where the gate is, there's a gate there and
Yep. They, they think they're, okay, we'll take a look at it.
Perfect place for some chickens.
We, we can trap them and get them brought to the Humane Society. Maybe somebody will take them for their farm. I mean, they, they take animals at the Huma- uh, they'll, they'll take roosters and chickens at the Humane Society. So, I'll get you, uh-
I think they're pets.
Could be. I know they can't have them in the city limits.
Okay.
I may wanna stop by there and see if I can get some
I, I had one guy that had a horse in his backyard. I went to a call years ago. Guy had an actual horse in his backyard when I went back there. Couldn't believe it. A horse with a saddle on it, in his backyard in Midtown.
With a saddle.
In Midtown?
Yeah. It was living in his backyard, so anything's possible, right?
Yeah, those are my, those are actually my only-
All right.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Bye.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes, sir. All right. Is, is Mr. Sexton here?
Yes.
Uh, yes, he's here.
Mr. Manager, I would like to, um, I'd like to have a report on the diversity training that was conducted for the employees.
Sure.
I'd like to know about the staff management and administration that took place, that took part, uh, in that. You may not be able to answer that now, but if you would put something together for us?
Be happy to put a report together.
Sure.
We've certainly done the training and it's available on our internet for those who weren't able to attend live, um, to, to watch it at their leisure. So I can put something together and get the city manager.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. I, I'm gonna send you all an email. I'd like for us to consider disparity study. Uh, Joanne has been placed over, um, minority businesses and what have you, but she's having a little difficulty. And, um, we just need to look and see if we, um, uh, I'm trying to look at this thing right now to tell you what it says. To determine if there are any inequities that exist in public procurement and contracting. Uh, I know she, she did something where she brought businesses in, but we need to just look at that. And I've spoken to, um, Dean Wright at the Business College at Bethune-Cookman, and they did a study like this for UCF, 'cause I, we always talk about how much studies cost. Rob's gonna say it's a million dollars. So, um, uh, they did this for UCF, so there, she's willing to partner with us and let this be a study that her master's students do, um, just so that we can be transparent with our business relations and make sure that we are, um, uh, including women and minorities in our, in our business transactions. All right? I, um, I'd like to know what we're doing in regards to the coronavirus. I, um, I sent you all an email today, uh, what the Volusia League of Cities put out, so if it's just something we wanna put out to staff in regards to what, what can be done, you know, washing your hands. And I spoke to, um, someone coming? I spoke to, um, Cory in the Fire Department and he was sharing. You wanna say something, Chief?
I'm, I'm just here to answer questions. Wouldn't you finish?
So we're gonna put something out?
Yes.
'Cause I hadn't seen an email or anything yet for staff. People are getting just a little leery. You know, we've got all these folks that are coming in town now for Bike Week, coming from everywhere. And, um, you know, our staff are out there dealing with them on a daily basis, just wanting to be conscientious. Go ahead.
Uh, Drew Drispel, Fire Chief, Deputy City Manager. Um, loading up on the screen momentarily, hopefully, is a short PowerPoint just to let you know where we're at with the coronavirus and the city's involvement and what we're asking of the community. Um, here we go right now.
No, there's not.
Oh, that looks horrible on the screen. I apologize. So, as we've probably heard in the media, um, we have coronavirus disease 2019, known as COVID-19. It is a novel or new virus, which means it has been previously unidentified, um, to the CDC and the World Health Organization. Uh, it was discovered in Wuhan, China, and is believed to have originated at, uh, animal source and has now since been communicated person to person. Uh, as of today, according to the CDC, there's 40 confirmed cases and 40, uh, presumptive positive cases across 13 states. Uh, there have been nine deaths in the United States. As of yesterday, according to the Florida Department of Health, uh, there were two confirmed cases in the state of Florida and one presumptive case in Florida. On March 1st, the Governor DeSantis, he, uh, released executive order authorizing the Florida Surgeon General to, uh, take the lead on COVID-19. And this also, the action also allows for the Department of Health to become the lead agency. Uh, they're in charge of testing, monitoring, and gives them the legal authority to, uh, make decisions regarding isolation, um, and other quarantine decisions. Just for our community to make sure they understand the signs and symptoms of COVID-19. Uh, they range from mild to severe. And with a onset of two to 14 days after, uh, contact with a infected or exposed person, symptoms consist of fever, cough, and shortness of breath. As far as city preparations, uh, the city continues to monitor this evolving situation. Uh, preparation activities have begun. Uh, preparedness and guidance for our public safety personnel has, uh, began to go out there. Um, this evening, uh, under Chief Capri's authority, Captain Zabo, our emergency manager, uh, put out an email to advise city staff of, uh, basic, uh, CDC guidance. Uh, we're currently reviewing and implementing the CDC Workplace Guidance, uh, dealing with , uh, clean and sanitary, um, hand sanitizers, clean office environment. And our IT department has been evaluating our in- infrastructure to, should the need arise in the future to have, uh, remote workers, uh, make sure that they have access to the city's network remotely. Um, all the way up to the point is if we needed to do a remote, uh, commission meeting, we'd have those capabilities also. Uh, we remain in constant contact with our partnering health agencies through the Volusia County Medical Director's Office and, uh, Volusia County Emergency Management. As far as our community, because it takes everyone's involvement for this. Uh, we can't be reactive. It can't be call 911 and we're gonna solve your problem. Um, from the CDC, basic hand washing guidelines of washing your hands with water and soap for 20 seconds, uh, that's how, helps mitigate the spread. Avoid close contact or less than six feet away from people that are known to be sick. Avoid touching your eyes, nose, and mouth. I think, uh, Captain Zabo even said that I think, uh, studies show that we touch our face up to 90 times a day. Um, avoid, or cover your cough and sneeze with the tissue and dispose of the, in the trash can. If you are sick, stay home. If you're sick, don't go grocery shopping. Have a friend go grocery shopping. Um, we have Bike Week coming in town, so we're gonna have a lot of extra people that may be under the weather, so we have to pay extra caution to that also. Uh, clean and disinfect frequently. Touch faces within your home with, uh, regular household cleaners and disinfectants. And just to reemphasize, wash your hands. Um, wash your hands with warm, uh, water and soap for 20 seconds. If you do not have access to water and soap, a hand sanitizer containing at least 60% alcohol, uh, will help contain the spread. And lastly, um, as I mentioned through, uh, the executive order, um, the Florida Department of Health is the lead agency, so if you want Florida-specific information, uh, go to the Florida Department of Health website. And they also have links to the CDC, who has the overall authority. Um, but from a city perspective, from a response perspective, we'll work with Florida Department of Health. We've already changed our dispatch criteria to include additional questioning about travel and signs and symptoms and how we're gonna react to that. If you are a patient, um, that is suspected, we're not transporting that person to the hospital. They're staying in their home and we're contacting the Department of Health and they will come out and do testing on site. Of course, if it's a life-threatening emergency, then of course we have to transport them and take those precautions there. Um, several other conversations on the county level with all the area stakeholders are being had right now of how would, how, how may we quarantine not only patients but also emergency response personnel? Uh, we have to maintain our, uh, critical infrastructure. We can't quarantine them at a fire station because these resources will dwindle immediately. So we're trying to minimize the number of people that engage potentially infected people. And then they'll be tested also in quarantine. Are there any other questions?
Well, Chief, do you think it's advantageous for us to put this community prevention stuff as a, something on our, our website?
Yes, so it's launched on CODB.us today.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, there's a link to the Department of Health website and COVID-19 op- information and also DBFD.us. Um, the same link exists there also.
So are you saying it's already on our website?
It is already on there.
Okay, very good.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
If I could just add one thing to that, the, uh, the, the, the testing kits have been in short supply. So as of the end of last week, there was only 15,000 kits. The CDC's expecting to have a million kits in, in hand by Friday. Um, and then another million a week from Friday, they'll be available for, uh, for private laboratory. So, um, Medicare has, uh, added a, a, a code, Hixman Code, uh, for billing. Um, and we consider it a preventative screening, uh, no-charge, um, test through Medicare. Uh, and most insurance companies should be following suit. I know we are.
And federal funding, I think it didn't get ratified today, but I believe it's supposed to hit the Senate floor tomorrow for approximately $7 billion to help the effort and make sure that all the state health departments have the resources they need to test in-house. Uh, we are testing in three locations in the state of Florida, Jacksonville, Tampa, and Miami. Um, previously, we had to send our testing material to Atlanta, so, uh, that's been resolved.
Chief, are you sharing some of this information with our police who'll be dealing with our, our folks in transits?
Yes, we, we had a preliminary discussion, uh, this morning at our staff meeting. Um, but we do need to maintain that we have proper personal protective equipment. It is in short supply right now, but our law enforcement could be utilizing the nitro gloves instead of leather gloves or just bare hands and making sure they're cleaned up. I know Chief Capri, uh, I think he has hand sanitizer all throughout the station and all the, uh, vehicles as of, uh, yesterday.
Okay.
So trying to take a proactive approach to limit the spread.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have two more things I'd like to just bring to our attention.
Mm-hmm.
I, um, had an opportunity to, um, to speak to, uh, one of our unions. And one of the, the concerns that came about was about morale. And one of the questions that, that they asked me to ask us was to consider bringing back the company picnic. Uh, it's, apparently it's something that they did for years that was, that we no longer do. Uh, we've hired a lot of new employees and a lot of folks don't know who, who they are. Uh, and, you know, we spend a lot of time in our jobs and our respective workplaces. Some, some more time at your work than you do at your own home or with your own family. And it would just be nice to have that camaraderie and for them to just be able to get to know each other and, and not only work together but play together and respect one another. So I think, I'd like for us to reconsider that. And the other concern was, and I just opened my mail on yesterday when I was here for my, um, secret meeting, that, um, the, um, awards banquet that we have, the awards luncheon that we now have, uh, apparently you used to could bring your family, then you could bring two people, then you could bring one person. Now they can't bring anybody. So you're being recognized for your years of service and there's no one from your family there to, to, to acknowledge and to, um, to celebrate with you. It's only staff and it's a luncheon now. And, um, and it said for invitees only. I read my little thing. And, um, so they're invited only. It's on their lunch break and no one from the family can come. It's no, no more of a personal invite. Is that correct? I see you clerk frowning. Okay, so you don't know, but you're frowning. All right. So apparently they can only, only they can come. And I know we do increments of five, five, 10, 15, 20, 25, 30, 35. You've been here 40 years and you're the only person at the luncheon that sees you're getting a 40-year award, and no one, we can't have one guest from your family, so we'd like to reconsider that as well. Okay? You agree? Say it in the mic.
Paul, are you thinking everybody, or are you thinking just at some threshold of, you've been here 20 years or more, you could bring a guest, or 30 years or more, what are you thinking?
At least, maybe at least 10. I think if you're, if you're invested 10 years and one guest, I'm not saying bring your whole family, and you might even, might not even come, but for those who are willing to come or would like to come, I think one guest would be sufficient.
I go to whatever year, unfortunately, this year, there's a conflict that I can't change, but it's, it's, it's a, it's an impressive thing to get that booklet and, and, you know, the pamphlet that has everybody and the years of service, how many people have been here for 30 or more years?
Exactly.
Yeah. Did you all give Commissioner Gilliland one when he goes over his threshold? He's got a lot of years.
They gave me a walker.
That concludes my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Went to Peabody yesterday with the Navy Band, and they mentioned that the city was a sponsor. Auditorium was packed, and everybody had a wonderful time, thank you. I think that's a well worth, well worth us sponsoring them.
Great, great.
That's all I've got to say.
Commissioners is out. We do have a visitor visiting our chambers this evening, and I do want to acknowledge her and offer a moment of, at the mic if she wants. Want to come forward, County Councilwoman Billy Wheeler represents a good portion of our city. Do you have any?
Billy Wheeler, Volusia County Council District, too. Thank you very much, thank you to all of, for everything that you do. I was very interested to hear about that because, you know, I've been very concerned about the health needs, especially in the 32114. Just everybody keep going on your senses 2020, please be counted, we need you, thank you.
Oh, thank you, good to see you always. I don't have very much, I just noticed tonight, as I listen to you all go around, and it's interesting to hear my colleagues who are commissioners and the different things that you are confronted with. When I first became mayor, I often reflected upon my time as commissioner and how many, the difference between the two roles in terms of the calls and what, what you receive from your residents and constituents. I can recall receiving very many calls when they had the old PI and about sound and noise, and so while I feel I receive about five or six times the calls I received when I was a commissioner, I haven't received one call on sound. And I did receive a call this week, which I have addressed with staff on something that is interesting, because much of what I heard tonight is, leaves me with my final remark. I received a call where a neighbor was receiving, had another neighbor, or at least it was a complaint, about the amount of animal feces that was, that they were finding in their neighbor's backyard, and it was starting to cause a stitch. And so, much of what I've heard tonight, and I, it's a true story, I received probably somewhere in public records, but anyway, I say that simply to say, you know, we live in a great community, but it is that, it's a community. And communities are only as good as, as we are, we who inhabit it. So we want to continue to be mindful, because we don't want to knock on doors for some things, some things we shouldn't have to knock on doors for. Having been raised in a house with six siblings, you know, there were just certain codes. Now, we have a city of 65, 66,000, let's be as community-oriented as we can possibly be, and that's it for me, that's my lecture for tonight. Mr. City Attorney, you have anything?
Mr. Mayor, I do have one thing. I've had the pleasure of working with you and this commission for a number of years, and really for this city for about 16 years, and it's certainly been a pleasure for me to do that, and I want to indicate to you that it is my intent to retire in March of 2021.
Is that it? So you're going to tell us?
Well, I had a whole list of things to tell you, but I wasn't going to bore anyone, but.
Well, I, I think you should tell us more than that.
Okay, this is a letter to the Honorable Mayor of Daytona Beach and the Commissioners. It is with great pride and pleasure for me to extend my appreciation to you for your leadership as Mayor of Daytona Beach and for acting astoundingly successful in, in the growth and prosperity of the community. Your perseverance in bringing together political leaders and managing the process to establish the First Step Shelter Board is truly amazing. We have planned, built, financed, and completed a facility that is effectively, is effective in delivering the hope, health, and success to a population that had, had lost everything. The community, the homeless population are indebted to you and for the leadership and commitment to the public service you have provided to this facility. As a city, the following return on investment to our community with the creation of over 10,000 new jobs as described below, you will see that all sectors of our community benefit. In 2005, the unemployment rate was 6.4%, 15, excuse me, 2015, it was 6.4% new construction. In 2015 was 269.7 million, and residential permits were 3,483, and commercial permits were 1,862. In 2019, the unemployment rate is 3.7%. So as you can see, the, the new jobs were directly related to the prosperity of our community. In 2019, we had new construction of 572 million, and then in new construction and in, for residential permits, we had 5,032, and commercial permits, 6,136. The total construction, new construction for five years was 2.25 billion. The residential permits in that same five-year period has increased to 44%. The commercial permits, 226% increase. The new construction value has increased 2.5 billion over the last five years. During the 15 years I've worked as City Manager for Daytona Beach, we have stabilized the tax rate for citizens, created reserves that protect the delivery service to the community. We have constructed two new community centers, a new swimming facility, and enhanced our leisure services to include programs for all ages in our community. We have restored the historic pier and secured a vendor that continues to provide a return on investment to the city. We have reinvested in the historic Jackie Robinson Ballpark and continue to host a Florida Minor League of Baseball team. We are implementing the master plan for the Riverfront Park with some 17 million in private investment by Hyatt and C.C. Brown. This is to demonstrate to our community, our commitment to improve the quality of life for, for our residents and the creation of new opportunities for generations to come. The stage is set for greatness and continued growth downtown and reinvest, and reinvestment in the housing and commercial properties. Over the past few years, the city and Volusia County jointly invested in Tangier Mall, Trader Joe's, and Consolidated Tamoca to provide infrastructure for the growth of the LPGA corridor. With the new apartments, retail, and commercial development, this is a new town-centered project that will continue to grow and contribute to the job market for our citizens. I believe we have exceeded our goal to create jobs in Daytona Beach. However, new opportunities for residents must keep the momentum moving forward to sustain our quality of life and build for the future of our children. I can truly say that it's been a great pride for me professionally, and I will always cherish the city and the many employees who have created the city that we live in today. The ingredients for success includes leadership, willingness to reach out into the future, and financial stewardship. I think, I thank this commission and Mayor Henry for the opportunity to serve Daytona Beach, and it's now time for me to spend time with my family and retire in March of 2021. I am happy to assist with the contacting the professional executive recruitment firm and developing a timeframe and a specific plan for the selection of a new city manager. If you so desire, a workshop can be scheduled to define that process. Sincerely, Jim Chisholm.
All right, is that for me?
Yes, sir. That is for you.
Okay, thank you very much. Of course, this is not news to us, he's shared it with me privately and I'm sure all of you. I want to say that my first sentiment is always when a man or a woman has worked for a long time in any capacity, I really, really sincerely celebrate their departure, because, you know, we, I celebrate it for the benefit of the person and their families. And, and being a city manager is, is, is a very challenging and tough job, obviously a very important role in any community. And to do it in one community for 15 years, it doesn't, doesn't happen in this business very often. And he, his managers listed a small portion of the many things that have been accomplished over the last 15 years, some of, two, two of which I will sort of re-highlight, but the first, I think, and Commissioner Gilliland being a senior member will recall this, but he was manager during the recession, and during the recession, he mentioned that we built two new community centers during his tenure, but we built those essentially during the recession, which I thought and still think is among the most remarkable of public feats in terms of, from a financial and fiscal responsibility level, that is, is something that is, is, I will laud as long as I'm a part of public life. I don't think they were easy things to accomplish, but they were accomplished in very creative ways. He furthermore has mentioned, you know, the relative, not, I won't say relative growth, but in my lifetime, certainly, we haven't had any sort of explosion like we've had in, in this community. And a lot of those policies and processes came to light or fruition through some very creative and, I won't quite refer to them as difficult, but certainly from a professional standpoint, they were challenging to come up with ways to make sure that they transpired, as was the desire of the various commissions for which you worked. And so, my concluding remark is simply to say that I look forward to, you know, whatever time we have left, which if, if I remain as mayor throughout your tenure, I look forward to us working together as a body to find a suitable replacement who will help to push our city forward. Again, I thank you, and I commend you, and I want to say on behalf of the city of Daytona Beach, it is our hope that the remaining time that you have with your family will be the best of time for you. And that's my sincere hope, because you've certainly earned it. I won't call it a thankless job, because it is a paid job, but a lot of what we receive in your role has been thankless, and thank you. Anyone else have any comments?
I just wanted to say, when Mr. Chisholm came to us, it was 19, oh, it was 2004, that was the year that we had three hurricanes, one right after the other, and why he didn't turn tail and run, I thank you for staying for us. But I, I think he's done a magnificent job, like you said, through the recession and everything.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, just to add on to your comments about what happened during the recession, you know, probably one of the most, you know, unheralded things was the rewrite of our land development code. You know, because while everybody else was out there circling the wagons, trying to figure out how to, how to survive, you know, the manager led the effort for us to, to position the city to be in a, at a point where, once the economy improved, investors were really going to look hard at Daytona Beach and recognize that we were somebody who wanted to see their dollars spent here. And I don't think, without a doubt, that's not, that's a major part of why we've seen the successes that we have. It wasn't sexy, but it was something that was, that was vitally important to, you know, what, where we are today. And, you know, Jim and I have, for a lot of years, have had this conversation about, you know, you know, and I, I said, when you're ready to go, we're going to need a long runway, because we've got big shoes to fill. And, you know, I don't know if every, well, nobody will remember this, except me, but, you know, the, the replacement police chief search failed, and we had to start over. The search for a new city attorney, you know, we were fortunate to have a very qualified internal candidate. You know, as we move forward, you know, we have some great department heads, I don't, you know, with no disrespect to any of them, you know, none of them have sort of that breadth of knowledge that you need to understand human resources, finance, public works, police, fire, water, sewer, you know, leisure services, you know, you name it. You know, they're all very good at what they do, but, you know, to be a manager, you need to have a, a working knowledge of all of those areas. You know, I think that, I appreciate the fact that he's giving us, you know, the, the time for us to have a very thoughtful and thorough process in place for us to, to, to seek out that person who will, you know, be the next person to lead the city.
Okay, no further comments. Thank you. Good night, but not goodbye.
Marjorie Johnson, 122 South Street. I'm here tonight because I'm concerned about the fact that you all are taking such a long time to finish up that road there on Martin Luther King, from checkers to Magnolia. The people are complaining, why is it taking so long? I said, I don't know what those people at the city are doing, but we want you to expedite it, you know, because those, one lady came in complaining at the last meeting, Cynthia Johnson, that she's lost a lot of business. A lot of people came to me who was complaining about it. So you need to expedite it, stop dragging your feet, get the work done. You need to do your job that the people are paying you to do. I'd just like to say, you have not shown the resident, our voices are being heard here at City Hall. When you adjourn the meeting, let us be after us, that's a violation of our rights. Disharmer conduct by the city manager Derrick Henry, Paula Reed, Anita May, and Ed Henry should not be tolerated. Discrimination is against the law, and I see a lot of going on here at City Hall that shouldn't be happening at these meetings. So please be courteous to our taxpayer and residents and do your job that we are paying you to do. We the willing, led by the annoying, are doing the impossible for the injustice that continues to go on at this meeting, and it goes on continuously. Right now, we have no communication or interaction with our city manager, James Chisholm, you, Derrick Henry, Paula Reed, and Ed Robert, Anita May, you need to go up there to the toll and fix that street. Also, my street there from the, needs to be repaired, that right there in front of the mosque, it's all cracked up. That house there on Key Street, finally, they have the police monitoring that house, the people was living in there, the guy that grew up, to about six feet, so they finally cut it, they are monitoring that house on a regular basis. We need you to be accessible to your constituents and to our residents. That's what we pay you to do, I'm not satisfied, and the people are complaining. Let's get that road.
Our next speaker is Thomas Brown, and on deck is Jim Schultz.
Hello, Thomas Brown, 1 Broddock Avenue, Daytona Beach, Florida. Now, we have a problem in our neighborhood, they're putting in a duplex, they're already doing rent, putting, putting a parking lot in front of the house, graded, there's no, no green, green area in front of the house hardly at all anymore, and they took about 22-foot of our street out, and I'd like somebody to do something about it. I've complained about it, and I know that they come over, they were, started out without no, they didn't have a permit, but then they got a permit, and I don't know how they got that, but they got landscaping now, right out across the neighbor's driveway, it's a bare lot next to me, and they've got landscaping to come out into the, on the edge of this, on this driveway, I don't know how he's going to get in and I don't know how he's going to get in and out of there. And they come out and put a stop work order onto it and they turned around and started working again. So that's only, I wanted to bring that to, you know, we live right on the river there, right, right in my driveway.
Braddock is on the beach side?
Braddock Avenue?
What's that?
Braddock, right, Braddock Avenue.
Right on, in Braddock Street. They got a, they come back way out with brick and stuff, onto the roadway, tore up quite a bit of the blacktop to do it.
So, Mr. Brown, sir, hey there. Hi there, good to see you again, sir. I just wanted to address the idea that the commissioners are not in fact present or working with the community. I'm going to address that right now. And so I showed up at your house on Monday evening. Yes, I did. So you went ahead and you emailed me in the afternoon. I called you about an hour later.
Right.
And at 7:00, I called you back. And then at 7:05, I was speaking to Captain Lee at his home, he was off work.
Right.
He and I conferred and at 7:30, I showed up at your door. And I said, here, sir, the results. So I'd like Captain Lee to do, if at all possible, is to please address that, because we had a full com, and then I came to your house and gave you the results.
He's been good.
He's been great. So could you just share with everybody? Thank you, sir.
Scott Lee, a police captain with the police department. He's referring to a house at 105 Braddock. There was a, they applied to tie in the apron of the new driveway to the roadway. That was reviewed by city staff and that was ultimately approved. They started that project, though, without receiving the actual permit that was required to do the project. We were made aware of it through, through some of the neighbors in the neighborhood. We responded out on a weekend, gathered our evidence, told them to stop. They did some of the work they were still supposed to not do, but that was later addressed when they came in and applied for a permit. They've since applied for a permit and it's working through the normal permitted process. Mr. Brown, I think is unhappy with what was allowed to, I guess, occur, but ultimately, these things were reviewed by staff and, and approved by those departments.
And so is there any kind of code violation at all?
For that specific issue, there is a violation currently for working without a permit.
Okay.
In that case, they, we told them to stop and they continued that same day. So there will be a case that will proceed forward to the code board.
Okay. Fantastic. Thank you so much for responding to me at 7:00 at night. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions?
No, sir. Thank you. All right.
Our next speaker is Jim Schultz and on deck is John Birch.
Jim Schultz, 117 Harvard Drive. Boy, coronavirus is in the news, as you would expect. And there have been a lot of other viruses and flus in the news. Have they really came up with solutions? No. How many have died? Quite a few in the U.S., very little. 700 people die in the United States every day of sepsis. Do you recall seeing anything in the news about that? Every day, just like two jumbo jets crashed. If a jumbo jet crashed, would you see it? Yeah, because they don't have an expensive drug that treats sepsis. No pharmaceutical treat it. Why talk about it? Just let the people die. They've got an inexpensive treatment that treats it, but they refuse to do it until there's years of blind testing to see. Well, that's one issue. Let's go to another one. Actually, very effective against almost all lung diseases and also viruses. Vitamin D. Oh, you can get a whole year's treatment for that, bottled with 365 for like $13, $15. Why talk about it? There's no money in it. But you make at least 300 antimicrobial peptides. Many, the most effective and noticeable ones are the ones for respiratory. Emory University thought, we have all these people dying in ICU or incredibly staying long stays, let's give them massive doses of vitamin D and see what happens. 50,000 a day, 100,000 a day for five days, just to see what would happen in respiratory ICU. The people that got none stayed 36 days. People got the medium dose 25 days. It cut in half with 18 days. That's Emory University. Guess what? Nobody cares. Nobody knows. You know, and I'm just baffled by the stupidity. Blacks are always much more efficient.
Our next speaker is John Birch and on deck is Pierre Lewis.
The one and only, good afternoon. How you all doing? I've got something very nice to talk about. First of all, you all are doing a marvelous job. And the job that you have to do, you know, it's a lot of pressure, because you're trying to please so many people. But I want to commend you, you've done a good job. But I got to talk about a few things, a few things. I liked the way that he came up and talked about that situation. But what about my community? No matter what you all say, in my community, there are drugs, of course. Lesser work, men are doing their thing. So when we got old houses, I don't care what no one says, my mom and dad worked that little raggedy house and there was so much love in that raggedy house. And guess what? In zone, where you at? My man's zone and, or his zone and y'all's zone, y'all don't have a raggedy house. So we love that house. So whenever you come into my neighborhood and you say you want to tear down everything, without saying, give me a chance to fix it up. You understand? Because that's all we had. Some of my brothers and sisters do not, they don't even want to remember that they was come up in the rough side of the mountain. But guess what? I do. I don't have no problem seeing my daddy out there working so hard, because it inspired me to work hard. It inspired me right now to run for what? Mayor of Daytona. You understand? Because I don't like a man that sits around and sees stuff happening in his church, in his community, and he does what? I'm going to drive out of here and I don't see nothing. I don't, that man is bound down on the side of the road that no one want to hit. But guess what? I do the be ministry now, no matter what they say. He can look at me any way they want, I'm a ball player. All I say is, we do have it in my community. And in children churches, no matter what nobody say, it ain't cheap job to go down there and work. It's my brothers, my cousins, her brother, it's all them black folks, people down there selling them drugs. And so we need to stop acting like it don't exist. It does. It exists. And if you read, you what? Step up and admit, guess what? Birch going up now. God bless America and I love y'all.
Our next speaker is Pierre Lewis and on deck is, Helena, is it Gerard? Thank you.
Pierre Lewis, 130 South Franklin Street. Good evening to all. Just three quick points I'd like to make. Number one, just to remind you again about April 23rd is the ROTC Gala for Military Officers Association, so if you'd like to support that, just write down your call as, and next time I'll bring you some save the date cards. Number two, I also took over as the commander of that AMVETS that's over there. So you can look for some new community projects going to go in there, because we have to, as we rebuild that structure that's there. And then number three, the, I guess the biggest thing that I want to talk about was the fact that I've mentioned before about being on the Midtown Redevelopment Board and still being the chair that's there. There's some issues I'd like to address that actually pertain to the CRA. However, as I mentioned before, the structure of that is that I'm talking about that now, whereas I would think that somehow or another would be in that meeting, at the end of the CRA meeting, as they had comments were not on the agenda, but still items that I thought that need to be addressed. I know that Midtown is a very unique, it's a very unique area, put it that way. I saw the great presentation by Mr. Murgisi, and as you know, with the area and the things that go on there, we'd like to be more of a proactive board. But in order for us to be more proactive, we have to be able, as I said before, establish and set our own agenda. Right now, the way the constraints are, we do not establish our own agenda. What happens is, we're on the reactive end of it. We don't talk about things such as construction permits, new construction, new permits that are going unemployment rate. The reason being, because when I've submitted that before, that isn't addressed, because it's knocked down somewhere, and Mr. Birch is gone, but I don't want the speaker to say that, somewhere, somewhere says that's not a part of your agenda. The land development code does not say the redevelopment board is to address that. And my thing is, we just had for the first time, when I worked with the, the city staff that's there, our first workshop. So we had two workshops, because we don't, oftentimes, we don't get that, because we only meet when it's time for the meeting. Finally, we had a workshop where we were able to hear everybody's opinions about where they think the direction should be headed for the actual Midtown area, what we're doing. So we can have a more proactive approach and work more in partnership with what CRA is doing and what our responsibilities are. But it's hard for me as the chair to address with them, this is what we are supposed to do when there's that lack of communication, not from your part, but the way that the structure. As I said, it's always about the process. So I'm always looking at what's wrong with the process. I believe in kaizen, you know, continuous improvement of the process. And I address it with our board members. I say, well, the same thing is, we've got to find out where the process, Mr. Mr. Thank you. That's it. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Did you say that you're now the?
AMVETS commander?
Yes.
Yeah, I got a bunch of commander spots. Yeah, I got that one, just to go over.
And then also, sir, what is your, what is the cost and time of your event on April 23rd?
It's, well, right now, it's going to be $40. They're working on, it's going to be 6:00 P.M. 5:00 P.M. will be the social and 6:00 P.M. will be the dinner. It's going to be at the ROTC, but I'll give you some save the date cards.
Sure. And the other thing, if you recall earlier, Commissioner Reed and I, I brought up in my comments that we wanted to have a primer on the CRAs.
Yes.
And so that being the case, I think it's a good idea for the redevelopment boards to be part of that, to understand exactly what's going on with, what the responsibilities are or how it works.
Yes, Commissioner, I think that would be great. I had, I probably, one quick comment. I had lunch with Sam Rogers and apparently this gentleman was the first chair of the Midtown Redevelopment Board in 1987. We were at the Halifax, we chatted, and I said to him, give it a ride on, I says, okay, Sam, I'm always looking for continuous improvement. What do you think is lacking and what do we need to improve on? Because in the process. And what's interesting is, he mentioned to me, he said, you know what, Pierre, the thing is, is in 1987, the goal of the Midtown Redevelopment Board was to get rid of blight. And I thought to myself, I was aghast, taken aback. I said, wow, this is 2020. And guess what the goal is? To get rid of blight. So I, I don't know what the answer is on that process, because we have done a lot and you have done, that's not, because I don't point fingers and tell people they're not doing their jobs, because they are. All my time is, she's looking, okay. I'm going to be quiet. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Helena Gerard and on deck is Doyle Lewis.
Hi, I just want to say thank you guys so much for all that you do. And I just want to say what an honor it's been to work on the Health Equity Project with the Health Department and Healthy Star and Dixie and one of, being one of 13 Pritzker Fellows in the entire country, it's been an amazing opportunity to bring back all the best practices that I get to go see around the country. And got to go tour Rhode Island and meet the governor. And I'm so excited to have everybody's support, because this has just been, it's just so exciting and it's energizing. And I think that my most valuable tool in this position has been my experiences and the empathy that I've gotten from all of the experiences. And I'm so excited that I get to come back here when I go on those trips, because I come back and I know what we have as strengths and I come back energized to work with you guys, work with our community and all of our stakeholders to just really improve outcomes for child, children and moms and babies. And so I'm really just excited to have your support and thank you. And one of the projects that we're working on right now, we, you asked about mental health. Chief, you keep getting shout outs, has been, it's a, it's a practice that was in Memphis, Tennessee, and it was working with the police department. Anytime a child witnesses a traumatic event, they may not have the Department of Children and Families called, because there wasn't, they weren't the victim, but they've still been traumatized. So having an avenue for the officers to have a brochure or have a resource for the family, maybe not right then, but later, when they decide, we have, we're building that relationship to, to address that, any mental health issues that would need to be addressed. So thank you so much.
You want to tell us what a Pritzker Fellow is? Do you want to tell?
I, I can, yes.
I would like that, so I think the community should know. We are very, it's just a great thing that we have you, so explain it to us.
It's, it's a huge honor. J.B. Pritzker, the governor of Illinois, and his wife are very invested in children and their goal was to reach a million babies below 200% of poverty level by the year 2023. And they thought the best way to do that was to have fellows embedded in communities and they wanted them to be in the communities that they already lived in. So I have a two-year fellowship and it'll be up in September. I'm so sad, but it's just been an amazing experience to get to go and I get to go around the country and share about what our community does. So that's, that's been a great honor and a privilege to represent us.
I have a crazy question.
Sure.
Out of everything you've seen so far, what is the most interesting thing that we're doing that is unique to you? Curious. That's a hard question.
That is a hard question.
I was just curious if there was a best practice that we had or that you thought was notable?
I think that the work that we do with substance exposed newborns and mothers with opioid addiction, Dixie and I just went to, we were asked to go present in Orange County, California, because they had no idea what to do. And the CARE Act of 2016, it's a federal law to have a plan of safe care when these moms leave the hospital with their babies. And so now we get, I get to go train around the state and now around the country on how to do that. But we're definitely, that's not the word, but.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our final speaker this evening is Doyle Lewis.
Good evening. Doyle Lewis, Daytona Beach, United States. Got five things to talk on. First, tip shelter update. It's doing well under the conditions that were given. It is definitely doing what it's supposed to be doing. And it's making people do the right thing. The new homeless in Daytona Beach, they came here because they wanted something different. They're waiting on the list. I know that for a fact. Number three, East ISB. Wow, that's a strong one there. I hear there's a lot of holdouts. If you hold out too long, guess what you got? Nothing. Been there, done that one. Make them make a decision. Dog barking. That's an interesting thing. How old is the dog? Is it young? Is it a puppy? Is it trained? What's the homeowner like? Did it train it to be mean or train it to bark to have food? It's just like anything else that's trained. So, Chief, you're hearing me, right? That's what a dog does. It is a human's best friend for a reason. A puppy will bark, because it needs something. Some of them will bark, because they want a treat and it was taught to do something for that trait. The fifth thing, the reason why Chicago is interested in this particular world's most famous beach is because we have a sunshine beach. If you don't believe that right now, you need to start studying that. That's why they're leaving Chicago.
Thank you.
Good night. Dare to be great, Daytona Beach.